Family emergency from Deb.
Thanks for letting me know. Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, March 2, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Joel Espiro, Andy Grove, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Deb Rule had a family emergency. He's not with us this evening. Well, now rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows.
I believe we may have some announcements.
Oh, we do. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any announcements this evening? Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of announcements. On one of mine. On our bond sale, I just wanted to update the council. We were planning on going to the open market. And for bond sale in order to refinance some of our loans in our water utility. Because of the volatility in the market at this point, our minimum savings is authorized by council to move forward with executing a sale. And things was a minimum savings of $1 million. As of last week, when we were looking at closing out a sale, it looked like really the best numbers we were going to get at that time were between 720 and 750,000 in savings. Which is still substantial, but we made a decision based on the advice of our financial advisor and also our authority is granted under council. To postpone the sale and the closing of the sale until hopefully the market stabilized some. We already have gotten our standard in pores rating as we covered at the last council meeting. So we're prepared with the bond rating to go back out to the market again. And one thing I would note, you've seen at past council meetings, we've had presentations from our disclosure council, from our bond council. As well as our financial advisor. All of the fees for those individuals are associated with a successful bond sale. So if we don't actually have a sale, we don't have fees for those professionals who have been Actually spent countless hours with us advising to get prepared to go to the market. So it's a timing issue. We kind of knew over the last month as things were kind of building up particularly. With the conflict and issues over in Ukraine that this may be a problem. And so we were following this weekly, but at this point we have determined that postponing.
Thank you.
My second announcement and is really kind of more of an update and share. Share my screen, Melissa. As councils aware and probably most of the public as well. This we had last week, which we affectionately have called it the city floodgate 2022. So last Tuesday, when we came to work at the end of the day after the president's day holiday. The city planner and myself were still here at City Hall discussing some items about six o'clock when all of a sudden it sounded like Three of our fire hoses shooting at our windows downstairs. So I told Amy we had to pause for a second. I didn't understand what sounded like we were in the middle of a shower. And looked out the window and water was spraying everywhere. And So the amount of water that we had coming in was coming in at a rate of 4,000 gallons a minute to give you an idea how spectacular it was here at City Hall. And as it turns out, up on our second floor. In the northeast corner of City Hall, we had a fire head, a fire sprinkler head that failed. And so it was spraying up and coming out the The attic area of the building down over the side and hitting with such force that was coming up and splashing the windows on the first floor. And we had a fairly spectacular flood up on the second floor. So I kind of wanted to show you a few pictures of what we had last week because I think that this is a great demonstration about The ability of our team across the city to have an adversity come in and just face the challenge and it's another day and we weather on. So This is what the first floor newly remodeled first floor looked like at about 7:30 PM. On Tuesday evening. By this time, I have called in for help from others. So you can see Austin Hall, our maintenance supervisor from Parks and Recreation and Facilities. He had come in. He had brought Sean in. Who typically is staffing over at Memorial Field. You can see Sarah Gilmore, our Planning assistant she was in because her area was completely flooded. The first other person here with me dealing with the flood after Amy was actually Police chief again. So he was over at the high school. So I called Cory in and And we were chasing the water as it was heading from one side of the building to the other. About eight o'clock, we look like this on the first floor. Kami's area was completely flooded and you might see her in a picture coming up. We called her to Determine what papers and things she needed to clean up from her area, but ceiling tiles were falling. This is up on the second floor that we have not remodeled and are hoping Council will approve next year in the budget in a third phase and that is our infamous sprinkler head, but this is after the water's been shut off. So this is kind of the Little bit trickling out of there. So Sean and Austin were up on the second floor. And if you look at the windows, you can kind of see The volume that we had. So second floor, how much water we had hitting the windows on the second floor and And that is actually, that's our payroll office currently. We have two staff working in there. Belinda, that's her desk with the two screens right there. And those are a lot of our payroll records, which We boxed up and managed to save that night. There is Chief Kuhn in action along with one of our firefighters trying to clear through The water that we had. You can see we've started moving boxes out. But you get an idea just how wet. This is after things have kind of settled down all the way down the floor on the the second floor. Jason Wiley, our Our recreation supervisor. This is down in his office at about We're here about 8:30, nine o'clock now. And tiles are failing and insulation's falling through and it started to become a real ugly mess on the first floor. So this is the next day after staff had cleaned up a lot of things. We got North Idaho flood and fire and they did a fantastic job showed up for us right away. We got all the blowers, all the vacuums in and that was all set up by about 9:30 on Tuesday night. So great local business with a great response for us and Blowers ran the rest of the week. So we sent out an announcement that next morning or that evening going into the next morning that City Hall was close to the public. And because we had so many blowers on the first and second floor, it was just so loud. And staff had to move around. So Wednesday morning, staff showed up for work and We've done significant upgrades to our technology over the last three or four years. People all work off of laptops for the most part. They picked up their laptops for mobile and We were working in teams. We sent some of our staff to work in fire. We had people working in the conference room upstairs was completely cleaned out. We had people fill in offices for other people who were out of the office and business went on as usual. We had sent out all of our notices and multiple signs that we closed to the public, but it was Utility billing week. And so people are in paying utility bills. And one thing about Sandpoint is our citizens like to interact with our city staff in person. And they continue to come. So we opened up our doors here like we did with the remodel and then served all the utility bills and worked with people. Over on this, in this building and it was business as usual with all of our staff functioning by 8:30 in the morning. This is what it looked like up at our payroll office at about 8:30 that morning as we're trying to dry things out. We have blowers. We have dehumidifiers. Everything was kind of taken apart there and up on our second floor, you can see multiple blowers and dehumidifiers Going in there, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize our team Across the city who nobody was phased. Everybody came to work and you're working in a different spot and Didn't miss a beat with the public at all. In addition to that, onsite at our remodel over in Police Meridian Construction is doing that work for us. They came over to the other side. We talked to the superintendent that night, told him what happened. While he was over the next morning and they said, what can we do? We'll bring in subcontractors. We'll get you going. So ceiling tiles were replaced within 48 hours. The adjuster was on site within 24 hours. We have some drywall patching that needs to happen. And we have some base molding work that needs to happen downstairs, but downstairs is basically back to what it was when we finished the remodel. Upstairs, we'll be waiting for All of the final reports from the adjuster on that. What we had talked about was probably just doing a Claims payment to the city that we could apply to the remodel on the second floor as opposed to trying to patch it up now. But Clearly you can see again, we have some deferred maintenance. We initially thought it was a frozen Sprinkler system pipe. That was not the case. It actually was a failed head. So The kind of rumors that city should have known or could have known freezing has happened in the past. That wasn't what the issue was that day. It was just another issue with a A sprinkler head that day. So anyway, I thought I'd share that with council. Since most of you aren't here on a daily basis and I really wanted to give kudos to our staff.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. And I reiterate that. You know, it really speaks to, first of all, you know, the only reason that this was even caught Is because like pretty much every single night. Jennifer and Sarah were here at six o'clock working overtime. On what day was this?
That was on Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yeah. So it could have been a Friday, it could have been, Jennifer was in here on Saturday working. So it could have been probably any day of the week. And not only that, but you know, I came in later that week and Everybody, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, people were kind of creatively working wherever they could. And I was just amazed that nobody even mentioned it. And there was no, you know, everybody had the same upbeat attitude. It was just like, everybody was unfazed. Just totally unfazed by what was going on in the transition. So hats off to the staff. Thank you, Corey, for stepping up and, you know, rushing in and really appreciate everybody's just You know, hard work. They continued hard work and ability to adapt. So hats off to you. Any others?
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or items Not listed on the agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign up form available up by the front. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or to staff and do not approach the dials. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. And I will also add that we do have a public hearing coming up on the Sand Creek Amendment to the To the planning and zoning code that relates to Sand Creek. That public hearing is At our next meeting. And so we will not be accepting any public comments on that issue either. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up on Zoom that would like to Speak at the public forum?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak, but we do have someone here in chambers who would like to speak during public forum.
Okay.
Rebecca Holland.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Holland. I'm a longtime resident of Bar County, business owner, 30 years, retired now. I served on the bike ped committee for nearly nine years. The issue that I wanted to talk to you about is the exchange of property at Gunning's Alley that's on the consent agenda. I don't know if you guys remember these. This is the bike route system that was adopted by city council back in 2016. And this is directly related to that spot. Just to real quickly go through it. I taught bike education for a bunch of years at our elementaries and for students in the bulk of town at Farm and Stidwell. Would say to them, what's the safe way to get from your home to city beach or to the bike Paths, our waterfront paths. And it goes directly through there. That was adopted by council. That has been taken away with this sale. And there has been no substitute, no answer. You know, I've always said there's always, there's, if there's a problem, there's a solution and we need to find it. And it's been a year and a half since this was, I thought this was all a done deal, but I see that it's on the agenda tonight. So I came again to say We have no solution. And this is important. This is important for the community, for kids in particular. People, adults can drive down there. Adults will be able to navigate. But the kids need a safe way to get there. And this is not, I'm not talking about South Sandpoint. I'm talking about the bulk of Sandpoint where most of the Residents live. And unless we come up with a solution, then you shouldn't be Giving this away. Now there's a developer there at this, at this corner. Why can't something be worked out? To maintain the fact that when you tell children to go to To come on into town, make their way to fifth where the RFB light is safely pass over, come on down Oak Street. Now they're standing there. There's the Panda. What they're supposed to do is Go on down and come on up Gunning's Alley. That's what we used to call it. Instead, we've, you're asking them to turn it first. Well, that was on the multimodal plan, but that got nixed. John Darling didn't think that was iconic enough. So it just went away. Now there's no zero solution. And I think until you, you ask your planning department to come up with that, you can't go forward. And that's what I was here to talk to you about. And I really think this is important. It's not important for us, as I said, as adults, but this is for our community. And you were elected to listen to the community, not to developers coming in. And that's where the energy needs to be. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of our meeting this evening. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,3,926.10 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. The consent calendar be approved.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Consent calendar is approved. Onto old business on August 4, 2021, under Resolution 21 Dash 040, Magnuson McHugh and Company was engaged to perform the city's annual audit. The auditors have completed their work and are with us this evening to present the report. Following the auditor's report, Finance Director, City Treasurer Sarah Lenz will also present the fiscal year 2021 quarter four And fiscal year 2022 quarter one reports. Sarah, will you introduce the auditors, please, and get us started?
And they're going to give a brief overview of what an audit is, what their role is in it. And then like Mayor said, I will then follow it up with the quarterly reports.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Laura Parasida. Do you want me to just jump right in, Sarah? I could kind of hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yours now?
Oh yeah, that's better. My name is Laura Parasida. I'm a manager at Magnuson McHugh in Coeur d'Alene. And also on here is Michelle Hanline. She's our audit partner. And I'm just going to really briefly go over what an audit is. So we are the city's independent auditors. So Independent, meaning we have no relationship with the city. We are entirely independent. Which is required when you have a financial statement audit. So the purpose of an audit is to provide and obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So in other words, that your financial statement Presentation is fair and in accordance with generally accepting accounting principles. So we We do, we get that assurance by doing various testing. We test, you know, balance sheet items and Financial activity throughout the year. And then we did issue an unmodified or what we sometimes call a clean opinion. So that means that the financial statements that the city presented to us were, in our opinion, fairly stated. And we didn't find any material journal entries or anything that needed to be posted in order to get them there. So That's really great. It's really a testament to your finance department, to Sarah. That the records were clean and we didn't have to Do anything to get it to the point that we could give that opinion. The other thing that we We do is a single audit and this is required for entities that spend greater than 750,000 in federal awards. The city had one, I believe, a few years ago, but it's, it's been a little while, but with the new CARES funding and ARPA funding. It created the need for a single audit this year. So what we do for a single audit is we, we look at your major programs and we test them for compliance With the federal guidelines. We also do some testing of internal controls, but we don't provide An opinion on your internal controls. However, we also had a clean opinion on your single audit. We did not see any non-compliance. We didn't see any deficiencies in internal controls that we felt needed to be brought to your attention or that we thought were an issue. So again, two, two distinct audits and a clean opinion on both of them. Just some highlights in The financial statements themselves. It will point out the MDNA at the beginning, management's discussion and analysis is, is done by management. And really provides detailed information on some of the activity during the year. Where they expect things to go in the following year. So in 2022. And so if you, if you would like to have some more information on that, it's a very detailed read. It's a good place to start. And then for, for Just a quick overview of some of the things that changed from your prior year financials. The main change was that GASB 84 was implemented. So your business improvement district fund Used to be presented separately as an agency fund. This GASB pronouncement requires it to be presented as a special revenue fund. So really the only change is, is the presentation. The activity is still the same. What's changed is where it's shown in your financial statements. I believe Sarah is going to go more into the financial details. If I didn't cover anything today that you have a question about. If you want to reach out to Sarah or directly to us, please feel free at any time. Michelle and I are both happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lauren. That is, that is perfect. In this open gov story, this is, was attached to your ARP, so our ARPA and then our ARP, sorry. And also you can find it on the full audit report attached here in this plug here. I'll go quickly through This overview highlights of not only the audit, but the fourth quarter and then also the first quarter. These are just changes in fund balances. We have the general fund. It has increased. We will get into that a little bit later on. The, the carryover amounts that are, that are basically unrestricted. They have a couple of different funds. I wanted to point out, we have the fiber optic fund and then the local option tax fund, which were negative balances at the end of last fiscal year. And local option tax fund that is closed out at the end of 21. The reason for the new New council members, the reason why that was negative is because we were, we had spent and we collected in the last three months of the year. So of the, of the first fiscal year, the last year before. So That was just a timing on when things were spent. Other than that, there's not Too much to highlight besides the park improvement fund. We did use some of those, those balances to finish the phase two of Memorial Park. Again, Over highlights here on the general fund. This is on page 20 of your financial, of the financial statements. They are broken out into the restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned balances, getting to the total ending balance of 13 million. The committed and assigned, those assigned fund balances are mostly the reserves that we have. So that the breakout again, if you go to page 20, you can actually see that the specific breakouts of what those things are that make up those balances. General fund revenues and expenses both under budget. The major difference between the budget to actual for expenditures is capital and grant projects are approximately 1.4 Under budget and then also personnel was about 500,000 under and MNO with approximately 550. Emergency and operating reserves. These are two reserves that were set up. And I'm going to scroll down real fast. In 2017, there was a resolution that was adopted that moved and established reserves. And these are shown here in this graph as being funded in 2017. We had the funds, but they hadn't been designated specifically for, let me go back up. For the emergency reserve and operating reserves. And these are per the resolution. There's 12% or 10 to 12% and then that 20 to 28% of expenditures is what's in that. And this is just showing you what the reserve is at right now, what the funding level is at 10%, 12%. And what it would be additional funds to fully fund that. In the past few years since 2017, we have at the end of each year fully funded those reserves with carryover money. And it would be a recommendation as well this year to fully fund that with our remaining reserves that we have for carryover. General fund capital. I wanted to show a few highlights of the capitalized projects that we have. I'm not going to read them, but you can see them. Again, you can go out to these open gov stories to see this as well. A general fund capital of total of about 1.4 that was capitalized. These are not all the projects that were going on, but these are the major ones that actually capitalized in the financial statements. Going down to the water fund. Same. Wanted to point out the, this, the net position. And this will with our, now our water capital, or I'm sorry, with our water Master plan, we have, as we're setting rates as well, this unrestricted balance will be Look, is being looked at for the capital projects that will be done in the next five plus years. So you'll see definitely more on this in the rate study presentations that will be coming up. I wanted to point out contributed capital here. This is a, an amount Both here and in wastewater treatment fund that if we have contractors that are doing work And they are building our infrastructure for us as part of their Projects, they, and then at the end of the project, they contribute that to the city and it now becomes our infrastructure. We book that at the end of the year. So that is something that In the past, well, since I've been here for the last about four years, we have not had any, this is the first year we've had any contributing capitals since I've been here. Very common Thing to book. Doesn't do anything bottom line to us, but it does affect our financials. So it does basically add assets. Going down to special revenue funds, the major projects that were going on this year with me, the Memorial Field surface. And there's, there was some dark fiber that we had a grant for that we did the down Community Hall dark fiber project for a total of about 1.9 of projects that were done in special revenue funds. Before I switch over to the quick fourth quarter, is there any questions overview on that? Again, anytime, please feel free to call me to, because there's a lot of detail in here that We could go on for a long time, but I know we've tried to eye level, so.
Sarah, this is also online for the public to go and.
Yes. So in each one of the In the ARC, they either a open gov story on that that they can click on as well as on our financial transparency page. They, after this, I'll be updating and there will be links to all of those as well. Right now there's past links on there, but there'll be the, the current links.
Thank you.
This is our fourth quarter. Again, kind of a summary of. Again, kind of a summary of what I just went over. There's a link to for the new council members. There is per state law. We have to show as in financials have to show certain things to the public. And this is, so this, this here link is how we have to show, we have to show personnel services, M and O and capital. And then also show the expenditures, the appropriations and the percentage spent. So this is just in compliance with that. And then going back here, as you go through this report. These are all, all clickable, so you can actually. Going, this is going to be the overall expenditures. So here in you can click on and get to more detail in here, just. So for the new council members, these are very, you can drill down to all the way down to. Very minute details if you want to. So I just. Wanted to point that out, that if you need any help and you want anything me to show you anymore, I can definitely show you on that. General fund expenses. This is, I mentioned before, we had salary savings, this was salary and employee benefits, that's where you can see. Actuals budget and then the variance there. And you're able to open up and drill down into from there what the benefits are. We were expended about ninety-three percent of our personnel expenditures through the year. That was the five hundred and fifty thousand of savings. That's the savings that we had from. Not being all the way spent and then. Keep going down. This is general fund capitals by projects. So again, you're able to drill down and actually see the projects, what their budgets were. I'm again going to go quickly through this. We could have. Spend all night looking at all these. This is a graph that what I tried to show in here is the, how the quarters percent. Spent of the budget compares to the prior year's budgets, because every budget is different, how it goes. One year might be forty million, one might be thirty-six million, one might be fifty million. As we're going forward in the future and we're doing the wastewater treatment plant, that. Maybe a lot more. So what I did here, and I thought was very useful, is saying, okay. How much of our budget is actually spent for that quarter? Just to see if your trending is right, to see if it's, if anything looks out of whack. For example, on the M and O in two thousand seventeen, that looks really high in the second quarter there and that of course bumps up that. Well, that was. When we paid a million dollars for these twice around about, that put the second quarter out of whack there. Easy to explain and see that on the graph, but these really, to me, give you a really good, a different look at how to look at the financials by side, just saying. Percentage wise, what do we spend? This is actually the percent of the compared to the other years of the budget spent. So nothing to note there. Expense trending, we did have quite a few capital projects that were completed in this last fiscal year compared to prior years. So the, at the end of. Down there. You can see here in our fourth quarter here, in the prior years, we're about about sixty percent. We actually were a lot higher this year. And I would say that that's because we were able to complete more of our, our capital projects. Going down into general fund revenues. Again, I am clickable, so you can say of these grants, what were they? Were there some of them are federal, some of them are state? You can do that with all the different types of revenues within here, so you can drill down to see what exactly made it the difference up between the budget to actuals. This, I do want to point out, this other finance sources. That is the beginning cash balance that we use and budgeted in the budget. So you won't see any. Revenues coming in for that because that was already cash, but we have to budget it in the revenue side of it. So it looks like it wasn't collected. Well, it it's not that it's not collected, it's just as a budgeting mechanism. To add into the budget. Down. General fund trending, another one of those trending. By, and again, this was our grants coming in that paid for capital projects, so revenues were higher in the last fiscal year as well compared to prior years. Not a bad thing. These ones here are just the special revenue funds. I have them by revenues and expenses. Again, you can drill down those. Not too much to note on fiber optic, there was the downtown. The downtown. Community hall. Extension there and just regular, a few other capital. Fiber projects that were going on. Here, this is the capital. The impact fees, we did have quite a few large projects that. Were done or that were paid for this last year, so the budget actuals came in much higher than the the actuals came in much higher than budgeted. Those are also segregated down into the different types of. What they are. So right here, they are designated parks, some of them are designated for transportation, fire and police. The rec fund. Not too much to note there. Park improvement balance, this was the funding to do. The, the prod, the second phase of the project was mostly what we did in this, in this fund this year. Getting into enterprise funds. Nothing to note out of unusual here. Again, clickable all the way down. Same thing on this other financing sources, that's beginning cash. So it, we, if we have cash reserves that we're using for projects, that's where that's budgeted at. Trending as well on this one, the. Them trending is, in my opinion, is consistent with the revenues and expenses on both sides of it. Much to note on the wastewater treatment as well, same thing. Revenues as well. Then getting down to. Sanitation, that was consistent, that one actually very consistent with budgets, so. The last one I do want to point out is our resort city taxes. One has been in the last several years, one that we've been watching. And it did take a little bit of a dip last year. This, then like twenty twenty last year. This year, it was actually, we ended up very, very much ahead of our projections. We knew that coming into it. Here's the numbers. Of what we show. And I will, for the first quarter, it, I will show too that the first quarter is coming in much higher than even last year, so. I don't know if you want to jump in now or after the first quarter.
I'll wait till after first time.
Other than that, that is, there's. Things came in, I mean, very much how we budgeted, and there's nothing unusual to note. Again, if there's a lot to drill into here, so if you have questions, you want anything in detail. Please let me know. There's, there's a lot and I can go on for hours, but I won't.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I ask you a quick question. About the occupancy task, do you, do we, do we as a city have data about the sources of those tax revenues in terms of short-term rentals versus hotels?
Yes, we have all of that and we track all that. We have it by, we have the breakdown of that. Yes, we do.
Okay, I might be interested in seeing that.
Yes, that we definitely, and we have it over the years too.
Great.
All right. You don't have any other questions? I will slip into the. First quarter. And I'm just going to scroll quickly through this because there is not a whole lot to note. And our first, actually the first almost three quarters of the, of the city's financials. There, we're not doing capital projects normally at the beginning, so our, our, our actuals to budgets look very low, especially in the capital. Our big heavy time is the summertime, which happens to be in our last quarter of the year. So they're very uneventful usually until the last quarter and then you don't get that until. Until the, until well into the next year, so. Just to, just so you guys know that, that it is very, it's usually just payroll and some M and O expenses that are going through. This year, we do have a little bit more with the remodel going on. But for the most part, when it comes to any of the water sewer or street projects, they're not kicking off until summertime. So in here, we are at. Sorry. Here that in the general fund, we're at seventeen point six percent expended for personnel expenditures through the first quarter. And in the next agenda item, you will have a, a part of that is due to this lower percentage. The maintenance operations were at twenty-three point nine and then the capital projects that I just noted is only at six point seven percent. Here. Again, trending, right, what we want to see, not anything to note, much more there. All from this trending, I was assured. Revenues, one other thing I want to point out for revenues on especially property taxes is the first, we get those in two lots. Most are two big lots, one is in January and one is in July, so that hits actually the second quarter and also the fourth quarter, so. They typically, you'll see that it's like this, this time right now, it's a very low, we haven't received very much for the, for the year, so that makes it look weird trending wise, but it will definitely catch up. After next quarter, it'll be much higher and then it will go back down and then up at the very end. And you'll see that also with the state government shared revenues. They also are the same way. They come in quarterly and is always a quarter after, it's always in the first quarter is in January, so it looks low the very first quarter. Otherwise, the rest of the, the revenues are right on par to prior years. Match is showing. Right here, last year, we did just note what this was. This was a, when we, we did a property tax relief. That went out that we actually relieved, it was a, a little over a million, close to two million dollars that we got from the state. That came in actually in December of last year, so it blips that up a little bit last year. That would have came in in property taxes if it was not, did not come in in the current, so that's what. This is not any activity in Harley at all in the fiber fund. A little bit coming in for the impact fees. Again, that will pick up again with our, our, the building when that picks up for the summer and. Direct fund. Is right on par for what it's been in the past years at this time. And with park funds and I'm the same, actually with all these ones, they're all in the same, but again, drill into it. If you have any questions, let me know. I'll just scroll down to. The occupancy tax again. Back up to this graph. And you can see there, the first quarter is higher than it has been, but going down here, you can see here that we're on trend. Here at even a higher pace, so. We have increased the budget this year compared to last year. At this, at this rate, we might even have more, we might collect more than what we budgeted this year. As to be seen in the future, but. That's a lot more, that's twenty thousand more than what we, but are that what we received last year, so.
As a reminder to council, the resort city tax as approved by voters is primarily used to fund public safety services that are impacted by. Tourism significantly in the summer season. It also supports. Some of our parks and recreation programming, specifically our lifeguard program is funded predominantly by the resort city tax. Already in terms of other trends that we're seeing related to other city activities. We have almost thirty special event permits in already this year, and that was. As of late January, we're typically not permitting thirty events in an entire calendar year. And that is also not including festivals, special event permits, which should be coming in in the next. Week and lost in the fifties while we've talked with Carolyn, her, her permit will be coming in shortly. So we're on trend in terms of activity visits. And, and impacts really for us in terms of tourism. Recreation and those things continuing to, we're seeing an uptick already this year. Both in revenue numbers as well as activity here at City Hall, so. Just wanted to put that out there. We're kind of in the lull or reprieve right now for what we expect is going to be unprecedented. Summer season.
Just wanted to mention, we also with that. Resort city tax, occupancy tax also funds our diver dredging program at City Beach and. Other swimming areas that, that where we have a diver dredge management program there. In place of chemical treatment. And then it supports spot bus. Budget as well.
All right, any questions? Hold me at any time.
I just wanted to ask if you have any questions of myself or Michelle, otherwise we will hop off and let you finish your meeting.
I do have one question, so I, I understand that we spent a significant portion of our. Allotment of ARPA funds at the end of the last budget cycle. And that was, that was included under review of. In this audit, is that correct?
The ARPA funding, we did look at certain expenditures that were for the H VAC system.
Okay, and I just bring that up because I held a mayor's roundtable. Discussion last week and that was a concern of some citizens that the city maybe have some financial liability there. Due to ARPA grant, grants, and. I just wanted to assure the public that those were reviewed during the audit and. And we got a clean audit report, so.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I can, I can confirm, we did look at ARPA and we did not see any noncompliance with what we tested.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much for that presentation. And for your work. Thanks, Sarah. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The final item under old business is a proposal for a two percent cost of living adjustment for regular employees eligible to participate. In the city's regions, medical, delta dental coverage. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton has a brief presentation for us. Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be fairly brief because most of this is in our council packet and report that was provided and if council has any questions. Before you tonight is a proposal to provide a two percent COLA for. Regular city staff who are eligible, participate in our regia, regions, medical or del, delta dental plans. Due to a number of factors, both with redesign of our plants. Over the last few years, which is included. Offering a variety of medical plans for employees, so with employees moving across different plans. As well as just overall some of our utilization going down. We are seeing savings in our medical premiums this year and this fiscal year. Beyond what we had budgeted. So we budgeted in this fiscal year. A fifteen percent increase in our medical premiums because it's. Responsible for us to budget for some increase. It's rare that you ever see a decrease, but. We are at that time as a city where we actually saw a decrease in our premiums this year and as a result. We are seeing operational budget savings in our salary benefit lines of approximately ninety-one thousand dollars. We continue to watch the trends relative to inflation escalating wages, how we're going to benchmark. And what that it looks like with other governments, so that we can remain competitive. Both with recruiting employees, but more importantly with retaining our employees that we have at the city. In this competitive job market, it's become a real challenge because we've had some open positions and in order to. Hire someone into your workplace. When there are so many other employers that are hiring, we often find ourselves having to hire at the higher end of our scale. And for our existing employees, then they don't benefit from what the current market is. They only benefit from market changes as we are looking at benchmarking against other jurisdictions and what we need to do relative to with any cost of living increases for our employees. We've had a history at the city, especially over the last. Six or seven years of really being proactive and looking at where the market is moving. And proactively moving our COLAs so that. We aren't stuck with the year where we're looking at, we're way behind what market is. so that we aren't stuck with the year where we're looking at, we're way behind what market is, is showing where we should be. Although it's getting to be increasingly challenging as some of our other government agencies are competing with Washington wages, Washington governments and what they are doing, uh, what they're doing with their wages. Our recommendation to council is that, uh, we provide our employees who are eligible for these programs with a 2% COLA effective April 1st of this year. As we look into our budgeting processes for next year, we're already, we're already benchmarking. We're already starting our budget process for it will be coming to you ultimately this summer. We project that we're going to be looking at a COLA of probably three more likely 4% in order to be able to stay with our benchmarks. So what in fact we are proposing here is basically upfronting part of that COLA for those employees who are participating in those programs and for whom we have budget savings that's already sitting in salary and benefit lines. So in terms of upfronting that COLA, that would be a one-time expense and we have one-time savings for those. Now certainly going into next year's budget with COLAs that will build then year over year. But again, what we're proposing is upfronting that COLA. And again, this is related to equitable balance for our existing employees, considering our hiring environment. Especially as we get moving forward, we're already into temp seasonal hiring for our parks. Uh, and, uh, we are going to be looking at wage increases already with temp seasonal employees in order to even compete with fast food when we're looking for employees who've got to have some skills for equipment and ability to perform our services here at the city. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you have. The mayor and I have discussed this in detail. Sarah worked on this as well, looking at what the cost would be, where we had savings, what impacts would be. And the mayor recommended moving this forward to council for consideration tonight.
Any questions from council?
More of a statement. Just want to commend the city for being, uh, very forward-thinking and compassionate employer for our community. I think that, uh, many of us are very lucky to live in Sandpoint and there are employees that are very lucky to be working at such a good place. So thanks for being so caring for our people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Do we know, um, what is the number of eligible employees that this will affect this year?
Get the number of employees there. It'll be 80 out of our workforces or current workforce is just under 100. So it's the vast majority of our employees at the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion to approve the 2% cost of living adjustment effective April 1st, 2022 for rate ways eligible for participation in the city's region's medical, Delta dental coverage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow.
Yes.
Motion passes, there is no new business on the agenda this evening. And that leaves us with the final item on the agenda, which is an executive session. But entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho code section 74 dash 2061B to consider the evaluation dismissal or at or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. Is there a motion?
Second.
And moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow.
Yes.
Counselor Groot.
Yes.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Motion passes, I want to thank the members of the public who participated this evening, both, uh, in, in attendance here this evening as well as those participating on Zoom. Everyone not participating in the executive session is now asked to please exit the room. Thank you. Have a good evening.